...city services, but that was a snapshot of the finances from the auction that was held February 13th. Once again, $102,000 was generated, $5,000 to the auctioneer, $20,000 to the City of Flint, and the remaining amount of $75,000 will be held by complete towing.
Well, I'll get a copy of all that so I can add it to my records. So, I, one of the things about the Unbudsmann's Office and which kind of made me mad when they fired, you know, Brenda and said they were getting rid of it, is some of you know that was my goal office. That's the office that I am after. I have spoken with Brenda and she was gonna let me come in and work in the office prior, because this was her last year anyway. So, and with me being the way I am about wrongdoing, I'm going for that office if it remains and, and we can get rid of Mike and, and all this other garbage. But, as I said, my wife is more important, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna take my leave. And I thank you guys for coming. I mean, it does show who represents us. I mean, most of the people that aren't here are the ones that I was after. I mean, and I'm continuously after. Mr. Bade, he should be fired. I mean, period, that's it. Mr. Bade should be fired. Every time I have tried to do anything with Mr. Bade, then, then it gets shut down, it gets, you know, and, and this is wrong. So, I'm taking my leave. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Chris Delmaroni.
Thank you. My name is Chris Delmaroni and I live in Flint, Michigan. A crime has been committed in our city. And Water and Sewer Fund, the Self-Insurance Fund, road money, it has been stolen, it has been stolen, taken away from the residents of Flint. And something needs to be done. If someone is not strong enough to resign, if someone is not strong enough to pay the money back, then council should be strong enough to take action against those people. Counsel, and I'm not picking sides here, council was more than willing to go after one of our former mayors and what he had done to try and get some money back. It's time to go after this mayor. It is time. A crime has been committed. You just can't take money out of the Water and Sewer Fund, use it for city operations, and then turn around and raise the water and sewer rates to the residents of Flint and then blame Detroit. It's not right. Take a look, contrast what Detroit is doing under the Emergency Financial Manager Law and what Flint did, or let me say, did not do. Flint failed, Detroit is fighting. And what amazes me from the council, I know at least five members of this city council, at least five have union ties, where they either belong to a union, they represent people that belong to a union, they're former workers who are represented by a union. And I don't understand how, in a community of, the home of the sit-downers, who risked their lives, who spent their holidays in auto plants, how this would happen in our community without a fight. Sometimes, you need to fight just on principle. But this time, we needed to fight on what was right. And we failed. Council failed, the mayor failed. Keep in mind, our current mayor went through the Emergency Financial Manager training. And isn't it ironic, he's back in charge now? I mean, does it really matter who's in charge? You got Mike Brown, who's with the chamber, and you've got a current mayor who has ties to the chamber, who's gone through the Emergency Financial Manager process, the training. Something's wrong. Do not give any money to the chamber. Keep in mind, that which the Emergency Financial Manager did is now null and void. So he wanted to give $35,000 to the chamber, and we need to make sure that that stopped. I've said in the past that some of the things that happen in our community, it's like a tsunami, okay? A tidal wave, some will call it. You have this massive amount of water. It comes in, into a community, and it splashes on its shores, and it moves into the community, and then it moves back out. And when it moves back out, it sucks everything out. Well, that's what we've had going on in our community for many years now. People come into our community, they make a big splash, and then they suck everything out. They take all the money out. The real story that needs to be told by the media, I mean, if they want to win some awards, they can do this either as a positive thing for our community that, that people have done, and I will allude, I will mention, not any names, but the organizations. They can look at it as a positive thing that, that has gone on in our community or a negative. I will challenge the media to pick one or the other. But it's, it's a story that needs to be told. And it's a story about organizations that are, are running businesses in the 500 block of downtown Flint. It's a story about the Michigan School for the Deaf. It's a story about the Mott Foundation. It's a story about Smith Village and who is the architect there. It's a story about acquiring property from the Genesee County Land Bank across the street from the Great Lakes Technology Center. It's a story about Hurley Hospital. It's a story about the Rutherford Deck. It's a story about the Flint Journal Building. It's a story about the Flint Journal's new location. It's a story about Powers High School. It's a story about the Genesee Regional Chamber of Commerce. It's a story about the White Building on the U of M Flint campus. A story about the building at the Regional Tech Center on the Mott Community College Campus. It's a story about the University of Michigan Flint and the Hyatt Regency and U of M's Business School. It's a story about Powers Coaches. And I would challenge the media to find out all those ties. Those, that's the puzzle. Those are the pieces to the puzzle. And you'll see where a lot of our money in this community has gone. It's unfortunate.
Mr. Delmaroni, can, can you wrap up?
I have, thank you.
Thank you so much. The next speaker is John Finnessy. I'm sorry. Finnessy, thank you.
Let me see, get my information right. I'm gonna start out by, my name is John Finnessy, I'm a resident here in the City of Flint. Yes, I think this is my first open meeting I've ever been to. And I really wanted to come down because I actually have worked for the City of Flint for some time. But, instead of going through the numbers and all of that, because I know a lot of numbers and all of that, but I did want to address the council about accountability. And I want to read a definition of accountability. Responsibility to someone or for some activity. Answerability. And for some reason, you know, when I hear that our, you know, our council had to go and, you know, file the open meeting agenda down there in Lansing, you know, I was kind of hurt because I figured that the city council would have stepped forward beforehand and, you know, fought for us. But I looked at the overall picture where the, the mayor, you know, he sits on so many different boards. When he had to open, you know, talk about the state of the city, all he did was talk about all the GM jobs that came in and he takes credit for. And all the different killings that goes on in the city. And it seems like nobody's really wants to be accountable, you know? And when Mr. Brown had his meetings, you know, I addressed the chief of police and asked him, you know, what we gonna do about all these killings? You know, what's your plan? Well, you know, how can I participate? And he was offended. You know, he said, what am I gonna do? What are you gonna do? And I said, hold on, I'm not getting baited, you know? Seemed like you would have a plan, you know, but seemed like nobody wants to be accountable. We just want to get our checks and go home, you know? And in the meantime, you know, the City of Flint, which I, you know, been here most of my life, is going down the toilet. We have a lot of great things that's downtown, a lot of the grant money was pulled out of the neighborhoods, but, you know, for some reason, we, you know, we gotta get it together. We gotta be more accountable for our actions. You know, when different companies come to council people and they want to offer you money, they don't want to offer you money just because they like you. They want a favor, you know? And, you know, in particular, the City Towing Contract, when I heard that they got that back, I was hurt because I said, there's no way that they should be in control of that. That's one, that's one good thing that Don Williamson had, you know? You know, overall, in general, we just have to be more accountable. You know, we can't gamble and say that we're gonna have the opportunity to make a difference when, you know, the state review team is coming back for our heads. They coming back viciously. They're not just coming back, you know, like they were before, trying to drag on time, trying to figure out what angle they're gonna come. They gonna come back viciously. So, you know, we do need to get together, you know, in one accord, and have a plan, and get somebody that actually is on our side, you know? When we run businesses, you don't want nobody negative. You want somebody that's in your corner. So, if you gotta get somebody from, that's gonna, from somewhere else that's gonna give you better legal advice, you know, I was thinking the same thing that Mays was thinking, that's what you have to do. You can't, you know, you can't get behind the ball again, because they gonna strip the city of all its assets, you know? That's what they coming for. And if you look at all the different communities, and this majority black, that's what they've been doing. They've been stripping their assets. They'll say, well, we're gonna join these programs together, we're gonna use the state, the sheriff's department, and we're gonna do this and that. All it's doing is stripping your assets. So you can never be in control again. They, they take the control, you lose council, you lose mayor, now you just got a manager for the city, you know? So I, you know, I appreciate your time, and I love all of you, because you're doing a good job, but we have to be more accountable for our actions, you know? All right.
Thank you. The next is Doran Childers. Childers, thank you.
Okay, first I'd like to thank all of y'all for being here, because it do show that concern there, when you really didn't have to be. And what everybody in the, basically came up and said, well, the whole biggest problem is revenue. We need to have money here in the city to function, or we would be in the situation we are in today. And what I'd like to address is where we want area... So when stuff like that happens, that you wind up losing peoples out of the city here who wants to be in the city, who wants to make the payments, who, who wants to in better neighborhoods, and you pushing them away. But I'd like to thank you for the time I hit the line back there.
Thank you, Mr. Childers. Childers, I'm sorry. Childers. Okay, the next speaker is...
...that I have to share, sometimes I feel like my life, I might be putting my life in danger, you know, but I'm willing to die. You know what I'm saying? Because I'm willing to live the truth. So it's like, I don't care about losing my life to speak that truth, you know? So, I'm just asking that other people do the same thing, you know what I'm saying? You, you guys are powerful people in the city, you have access to media. Have this, this influence where people are more eager to listen to what you have to say versus somebody that they don't know. You know what I'm saying? It's hard for me to have a plateau of communication with the people, so I can give them information to where they have an ability to make a decision about their government, because a lot of our people are deprived. You know, our public education system is, our public school system is a public fool system, all right? All our kids, they're being trained and their behavior is being modified. They are not being taught to think. And, and this is what we're producing, so this particular system can carry on. Because when those kids get 18, guess what? They're not thinkers. So that means when they can't participate in government, government can make decisions and they don't even know what the hell going on. You know, and that's what I gotta deal with when I be trying to wake up the public. So I'm asking and I'm pleading that, you know what I'm saying, you, you know, get in touch with your heart, you know, because there's some corruption going on. You know, I might not be able to specifically say exactly what it is, but seeing the conditions of my city, there's some corruption going on, man, and somebody gotta take a stand, you know? And, don't, don't, uh, don't accept that oath to secrecy. You know, don't quit, quit the good boy network, you know? There's some wrong stuff going on, take a stand. And you guys got the legal background, you have legislative powers, you can easily prosecute criminals, you can easily initiate the prosecution of criminals, you know? And that's what our community need. We need a complete revamp of our city government. It needs to be cleaned up, okay? Because it's the people that suffer, it's 102,000 people here. You know, and what, 10,000 of them happy? You know, the other 85 is dissatisfied? That's not good. That's not how a city's supposed to be, you know? We need job creation. You guys, like I said, have the plateau of communication with the people, you know? So, come talk to us, come get some of our ideas. I don't care if you borrow my ideas, I don't care if you take my ideas and execute it. I don't want any credit for that. I want to see my people making money, I want to see their wages matching their cost of living, I want to see consumer powers kick the hell up out of our city and everybody on solar power. There is no reason why we should not be using today's technology to support a system that is taxing us to live on this planet, when we can free our society and create a happier society, you know? So, just, no more oaths to secrecy, no more good boy networks, no more, you know, if you be quiet, I'ma look out for you. You know what I'm saying? I'm just pleading, begging that, you know, somebody take a stand. Y'all got the power to do something about it, so I'm just pleading that you do. You know, pray about it, meditate on it, contemplate, you know? And, yeah, thanks for having me, though.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, the final, the final speaker is Nayira Sharif.
I actually did want to speak, but, earlier, but, you know, I agreed that I was gonna do the overview, and so this time is me, me time. So, I'm happy y'all here, but I think that it's, it's just gonna be directed to y'all, because there's been a lot of things that have been bothering me, because I think that, you know, like while we were there and we're happy for now that the emergency manager is not, you know, in power, because we felt that law itself was wrong, but we were not happy with the quality of service that we were getting from y'all. We weren't happy with the quality that we were getting from our city council and our administration. Well, I'll speak for myself, me, I wasn't happy. Because it's something I noticed, like I felt like it's been like the path of least resistance, there has not been any vision, any long-term strategy, and it's especially like sickening to me, because as a, like I'm a, I'm a community organizer, I teach strategy, I teach tactics to community groups and individuals across the state. And one of the things, well, I'm happy we have this informational meeting, but we recreated, well, y'all recreated, kind of like the same thing as, as a city council meeting, and this information meeting, y'all could be a little bit more relaxed, y'all had to sit up there. I mean, like even, like the, the geography of this room is, is, is set up. So we, so we are petitioning here, we're standing here at a podium, we aren't surrounded, we're separated from the audience, so we're kind of by ourselves, and we're petitioning y'all. And y'all separated by this, whatever this is. So, and then when you go out to, I remember y'all do, used to do those community, city council meetings, you recreate the same exact geography out there in the community. Well, y'all should be closer, be acting closer to the community and loosen up a little bit. Maybe we could have some more of these informational meetings where you're not as restricted, and possibly maybe y'all sitting out here, or we sit somewhere else where it's a dialogue, or we actually sitting in a circle, so we can all see eye to eye, because we're all Because I know, like the Occupy Flint General Assemblies, they're great at modeling this, so come to a general assembly meeting where you can, like, experience that. And hopefully, y'all could take some notes. So, especially like when y'all are in your community meetings and just start modeling that, so to get used and practice, so you can have like these, these feelings that we're all in it together, because we really are. We really are all in this together, because we may, we elect you to represent us, we elect you to be stewards, financial stewards, and caretakers for our interests, but you're still part of us, because we put you there. So, hopefully, you can, you know, sit in a circle, get in a circle somewhere, and, and live in that circle of, of constant dialogue, because I know you mentioned dialogue, I mean, I do dialogues for a living, but to me, like, this isn't a dialogue where it's kind of like this back and forth, where you have one person coming up, we have to sign in, and then you call us in, we come up and we speak. To me, that's not, I would say, like an authentic definition of what a dialogue is. A dialogue is more, we're sitting down and we're hashing out some of these larger issues. And I think that for us to address some of these larger issues, how are we gonna generate revenue, how are we gonna hold y'all more accountable, what should be our interest, I mean, those things are gonna take dialogue, and it's better first, if we start in a circle instead of, like, we're in this dichotomy of we're petitioning you, because we are not, this is intentionally meant to separate us from ourselves, from our community to come up here, and then you are separated, so you are, you are losing as well, because you are far from... are, you are losing as well, because you are far from your strength. So, um, hopefully the next time, and I hope that we have more informational meetings soon. I know that this is probably like an interim strategy, but hopefully this can be integrated with how you communicate with the public. Um, so we can maybe have some of that stuff. Thank you.
Thank you. Let me say that, um, that I, that I appreciate, uh, you know, all of the comments that have been made. And, uh, uh, because we have been silenced as a people, uh, for months-